Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for October 3rd, 2016. May I have your call, please? Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Widner.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Vivier is excused. Thank you, Emily. Would you please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation this evening for National Walk to School Day, and we have the Chair of our Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, Kate Perkins, here to receive the proclamation. But first, I'm going to read it. And I can ride my bike, right?
No.
Got to walk?
Yeah, let's walk to school there.
Okay.
You could scooter. You could rollerblade.
We'll talk later.
Okay.
"National Walk to School Day, October 5th, 2016. Whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk or bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine. Whereas driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution, whereas an important role for parents and caregivers is to encourage children to be aware of the challenges and dangers that they face on their trip to school each day, and the health and environmental risks related to physical inactivity and air pollution. And whereas community leaders and parents can determine the walkability of their community by using a walkability checklist. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the country are joining together to walk to school and evaluate walking and bicycling conditions in their communities, now therefore be it resolved that I, David O'Bromwell, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, in recognition of this important event, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 5th, 2016, as National Walk to School Day, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of children today and every day." Kate?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's get a picture.
Good.
And then, oh, one more?
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council, not only for this proclamation. I guess I thank you on behalf, I thank you on behalf of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, as well as the Johnson and the Bauer School PTAs, which have done a lot of work for this event. I thank you for your support of the event. I also thank you for your support of safe and pleasant walking and biking routes within our city. We look forward to a great day on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.[268.58][268.58](APPLAUSE).
And this is the time we set aside for citizens' comments. We have several folks signed up this evening. As I read your name, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and say your piece. Dave Adler, please, first.
Alder.
Alder, thank you.
I'll try and be brief. I don't want to take up a lot of your time. This is regarding item B on your agenda for this evening, the subdivision that's being built on Batavia Road. I live at 30W 274 Bedford, which backs up to that property. I'm all for the project, but I do have some concerns about the runoff and rainwater. As that property is on Batavia Road, that is at a much higher elevation than my property on Bedford Lane. When it rains, there's a serious problem. Every time it rains, I get standing water in my backyard as it is. So I'm concerned that you're going to put three more houses up, three more sun pumps that are going to pump water downhill into my backyard, and I'm going to have more standing water. I just want to make sure this gets addressed before there's any kind of approval on this, or I'd ask that you would at least have the builder address this. I already got a swimming pool in my backyard. I don't need any more water. I brought my neighbor here with me as well. She's got the same issues that I have with standing water. So if you guys can please address that before you give any kind of final approval to this, I'd appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Sure. Thank you. Catherine Costin?
Do I need to give my name and address? No? Yes?
Sure.
My name is Catherine Costin. I live at 32606 Fowler Circle. I have spoken at both September Planning Committee meetings. I'm against the BP station adding a Dunkin' Donuts drive-through on the corner of Winfield and Warrenville Road. I believe it's Agenda Item J. There will be added noise from the speakers, pickup window, and added cars going through the drive-through. There will be two lanes of traffic driving southbound on this property, sending headlights directly into our houses. The owner recognizes that the noise and the headlights will be a problem, and has offered to build a solid fence. But we really have no details about this fence. When is it going to be built in the project? Is it going to be the first part of the project, or is it going to be after the drive-through, if the drive-through goes through, is constructed? Are the existing trees going to stay? Are more trees going to be added? How tall is the fence going to be? I was laughed at during the plan meeting when I suggested a larger wall. But if you've seen how tall the residences of Cantera Village are, you know, if you put up a little six-foot wall, it's not going to do anything to block this noise or these headlights. At least increasing the fence height to eight feet would be better. When there is a problem, I still don't know who to contact about rule and code enforcement. You are going to hear some details about the real traffic patterns at this intersection, about how many ins and outs there already are at this business, and how hectic it already is. In addition to the busyness, this intersection has some other issues, including a hill at Warrenville Road that decreases sight, and Warrenville and Winfield roads don't line up. So when you go through, you kind of have to turn the car a little bit. To add more cars to this intersection will increase the safety concerns for automobiles, pedestrians, and bicycle traffic here. Why does this drive-through need to be open 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week? Also, in all of this discussion, no one has taken weekends into consideration. People say, "Well, didn't you move in after the gas station was here?" Yes, I did. I moved in after the gas station was here. Not a drive-through, which is going to completely change traffic patterns on this property. This is a residential area that he's right next to, so there needs to be some consideration that we live here. I will leave you with this thought. You have two small children, like I do. They're active in school, sports, church, and dance, and you just want them to get a good night's sleep. But none of you can, because now you live next to a Dunkin' Donuts drive-through that is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with cars, and headlights, and speakers, and traffic at all hours. There's smell from car exhaust and trash everywhere. Now imagine this was you, or your family, or your kids and their family. Please, I beg you, do what is best for this community, and do not allow this drive-through to be constructed. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Sharon Wade?
Good evening. Sharon Wade, 32701 Fowler Circle, Warrenville, Illinois. I too am from Cantera Village. I went to the planning, the second planning meeting I had been out of town a month prior to. I was not able to prepare for that meeting. I didn't think I needed to, but as a professional, I should have known better. So I apologize to the Planning Committee meeting and to you that I'm taking the time tonight to do that. From past business experience, I know the value and importance of facts and numbers when decisions are being made. I left the meeting last Thursday. I think it was last Thursday. Days get away from me. But anyway, I went home and I was feeling very uncomfortable. I woke up in the morning at 10:00 to 6:00 after the garbage truck had gone through and awakened me. And I thought, just to satisfy myself, I'm going to validate the numbers that were thrown out at the meeting the night before. I did that on Friday, and much to my surprise, the numbers were quite a bit higher than what were the national norm and averages that is a standard way of practice to measure for new development. So I went back on Monday. A little different complexion, but the numbers were exactly the same, in and outs. I went back Wednesday. The numbers were the same, totally different complexion. On Monday, there were 22 trucks. Seventeen of them had trailers. On Wednesday, there were only five. But there were the same number of in and outs. So I thought, huh. I had had plans for Wednesday morning, and they were canceled when I got back from sitting and counting cars going in and out of BP. So I decided, what could I do with that information? What can I do with my free time? And I decided to go and take a look at the three stations that we were compared to up in Lincolnshire, Rolling Meadows, and Elgin. If you would like to see, I have pictures of those locations. Yes, they are gas stations. They have Dunkin' Donuts drive-throughs, and they have a convenience store. They do not have a car wash. Their pumps are four. Four and five, we have eight. They're old and tired, and their convenience stores are at least half, or much smaller than that. So national norms, yes. National norms are built on high, medium, and low averages to get, come up with a median. These three, I feel, were on the low end of the spectrum, and we are definitely on the high end of the spectrum in terms of volume and production going through that property. On Friday, I thought, this is crazy. I'm not going to go back and count more cars. No, it was on Thursday. I woke up early, and I decided, I'm going to go count cars at Dunkin' Donuts, see how they go, because stacking issues are going to be a problem on this property. And it has been requested that the stacking be reduced compared to the ordinance that needed to be changed. Prior, it was 10. They're asking for nine. They're projecting seven as the volume they're going to have. If you got the report that I had asked the office to put in your mailboxes, you will see that I went to three different Dunkin' Donuts. Their lines are longer. The amount of time it takes to get through them is longer. Today, I went to a Dunkin' Donuts over on Warrenville and 53, and I was counting the seventh car and how long it took to get through. Three minutes and six seconds. There is a Dunkin' Donuts detached from a shell over on Roosevelt just before 3:55. Their traffic stacking up must be 12 to 13, and they're backed up onto Roosevelt Road every day of the week during, in between 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock in the morning. I will almost guarantee you that if you vote this in, in between 7:00 and 8:00, there will be backup onto Warrenville Road from the traffic coming up the hill wanting to turn in and get into line. Another thing that had not been talked about, I noticed at all the Dunkin' Donuts, a lot of people leave, but there are those who stay, park, and eat their little breakfast and work on their texting. Also, when you're stacking on a diagram, it is nine cars bumper to bumper. That's not reality. People are texting. They're getting money out. They're doing whatever they're doing. And there is space in between. So I think this Dunkin' Donuts, if it gets approved, is going to have a major problem in stacking and traffic flow. The stacking going out onto the roads at all three locations were anywhere from four to seven cars. You put all this on that piece of property, there's a huge overload. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sharon. Bob Seibert?
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. If you have a phone, and you receive a monthly phone bill, you can find out information about the federal government, the state government, and the City of Warrenville. Federal government states on taxes 3%. The bill is divided into three areas. First area, total monthly service. Second area, additional surcharges and special fees. Third area, taxes. Federal government says 3%. If you look at the dollar amount, they take 3% of the total monthly service, first total. The state says 7%. If you take 7% of this total monthly service, you don't get their number. They're going into the next area and increasing taxes on fees, not on the service. Then we look at the municipal telecommunications tax. No percentage, no statement of what percentage is being applied. If you divide that dollar amount by the total monthly service, you receive 6.23%. If you take that dollar amount and divide by the total amount of the taxes, the surcharges, and with AT&amp;T states as the monthly service for the bill, you wind up with 5%. Since the municipality doesn't say what their percent is, we only have a dollar amount. Question is, is a city charging a tax on other taxes, or other fees, or is a city charging 6.23%?
Thank you, Bob. Connie Schmidt?
Good evening. I'm here to say, hopefully, thank you. There's going to be a vote later on Monarch Resolution that we are so excited about. I just want to share that I will be giving, because I can't give them to you guys, I'll give them to Emily, some brochures on the DuPage Monarch Project. This is a work effort that is in cooperation with the CR Club, the Forest Preserve Districts of DuPage, the Conservation Foundation, and Wild Ones, which is a seed collecting group. All four of us are working hard together to get DuPage County to be a better habitat for monarchs, and we're excited that hopefully our city will be on board and help spread the word through education, through some signage on our properties to help people understand that increasing this habitat is very important for species and diversity. So thanks. Hopefully.
Thank you, Connie. You'd be proud of my wife today. In her classroom of preschoolers, she had a monarch come out, and they all got to hold it on their finger. Finally, we have quite a group of distinguished visitors here tonight from the American Legion. Gentlemen, would you please come up, all of you? Come on, you all came. You got to come up. We got to get a picture. Chad T. Woodburn, Membership Director, State of Illinois American Legion, is here with an important announcement about something that's happening here in Warrenville. Come on up. We have to get a picture of this. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please. It's yours.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Warrenville dignitaries, and citizens of Warrenville, good evening. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak. My name is Chad Woodburn. I am the Department Membership Director for the American Legion Department of Illinois. On behalf of our Department Commander Cherry Stanton, congratulations on your new American Legion post. She apologizes for not being able to be here tonight, as she has another commitment. Senior Vice Commander Bob Henderson is representing her, representing her place tonight. Your new post is in the 2nd Division and the 11th District. 2nd Division Commander is John Davis, and the 11th District Commander is Tony Ariano. Where are you at, Tony? And, step up for him, Madam President. The President of the Ladies American Legion Auxiliary, Jan Martinka, is present as well tonight. They will all be a part of the team to mentor the new post as they continue to grow and assist our veterans in your local community. The American Legion is the largest wartime veteran service organization formed in Paris, France, March 15th, 1919, by a group of veterans concerned about their benefits. It was founded on four principles, or pillars, as we call them, which are Americanism, children and youth, national security, and Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation. On June 4th, 1929, Warrenville opened a first post that was later closed in April of 1975. Fast forward to July 2016, concerned and motivated veterans called the headquarters office, wanting to know how to restart the post and how quick it can get done. Earlier this evening, I was honored to be a part of the new charter presentation. The four pillars are the backbone of our organization that provide programs to this new post that your new post will be involved with to help veterans and your local community. The new Warrenville officers that are here tonight are the Commander Vincent Morello, Senior Vice Commander Joe Rogers, and the Adjutant Dave Howe. Please congratulate these officers for stepping up to help other veterans in the community. Thank you very much for allowing me to quickly introduce the American Legion to your town. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask, and thank you for your commitment to the veterans. And being that I am the Membership Chairman for the State, are there any veterans amongst us tonight that aren't members of the Legion? Well, we've got some membership applications. I think we can take care of you guys and hook you right up. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
We'll give them a moment. Okay, onward to official and staff comments. A couple of things tonight for me. A reminder that the Warrenville Fire Protection District is having their Fire Prevention Week Open House on Wednesday, the 5th, that's the day after tomorrow, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Fire Station Number One on Batavia Road. Kids' activities, food, prizes, fire safety demonstrations, and just some networking with our fine fire protection people. So do come out and say hello and say thanks for what they provide for our community. Again, Wednesday evening, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., Fire Station Number One on Batavia Road, and bring the kids. Should be a good time. One other thing, it's one of those good news, bad news type things. I'm going to give you the bad news first. The bad news is that we had a bank robbery in Warrenville last Monday afternoon at 1:27 p.m. at West Suburban Bank. The good news is that the perpetrator was caught at four minutes later, before he even got out of town by RPD. Chief, congratulations. Give us some details, please.
As you had indicated, Mayor, the West Suburban Bank notified through DuCom of a bank robbery. Hold up. It was like at 1:20 in the afternoon. As a matter of course, officers go to the scene, but they also, what we call escape routes within the community, and those are usually in the arterial streets. About four minutes later, an officer sees a vehicle matching the description. He observes it for a while, and eventually stops the vehicle for a traffic violation, being it only had one front, or the front license plate was not displayed. He engages the person in conversation, and there's conflicting stories as to his whereabouts, and where he was going, and where he was coming from, and what have you. We notified the FBI, the individuals taken into custody, and subsequently identified by bank employees, and he is now a guest of the FBI down at the Metropolitan Correctional Center. Looks like he's a suspect in four other bank robberies in the suburban area here. So the officers did a really, really, really good job with that.
Good solid police work. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate it. I don't know if that's a record, but it should be. Four minutes. It's pretty impressive. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk? Thank you. And Alderman? Okay. Administrator? Oh, I'm sorry, Leah, did I miss you? Alderman Goodman?
I just wanted to announce that the Warrenville Fire Protection District is having an open house on Wednesday, October 5th, this coming Wednesday, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the firehouse. There'll be food, vendors, and demonstrations. So if anybody's interested in an open house, the fire district, come on out on Wednesday.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Now we'll go to the Administrator.
Does that work? Just a comment. The gentleman that was speaking earlier about the Batavia Road development, if he wants to follow up with our Public Works or our Senior Civil Engineer, call the city tomorrow. They can answer the questions about the drainage. We normally don't answer questions in citizen comments, but it's on the agenda to pass tonight. I didn't want you to walk away thinking we'd ignored that. The, all developers have to follow county and city regulations, and it should be addressed, but they can answer your questions in detail. Probably contact, who is that, Christine, or Christine Hocking at 393-9050 is the Department of Community Development. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, Attorney?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, David. Approval of your agenda for this evening. Alderman Widner?
I move to approve the agenda for the October 3rd, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting, with the exception of Item J. I'd like to pull that off, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Second.
Motion in a second. Alderman Hoffman?
I'd like to also pull off C, D, and E.
C, D, and E. Motioner in second, or agree to that change?
Agreed.
Okay, so we have an amended agenda for this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have several sets of minutes, or a couple sets of minutes that need approval. Also, Alderman Widener?
Move to approve the minutes of the September 19, 2016, City Council Regular Meeting, and to approve the minutes of the September 26, 2016, Finance and Personnel Committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6A, accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance number 3030 approving map amendment rezoning from TO Transitional Office District to R5 High Density Single Family Residential District and Memorializing Zoning Board of Appeals approval of a minor patio setback variation, 28 West 014 Warrenville Road. B, accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance number 3031 approving the final Batavia Road subdivision plat, accepting right-of-way dedication, and waiving certain public improvements at 30 West 150 Batavia Road. F, accept Finance Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance number 3035 amending the FY 2017 authorized strength ordinance number 2993. G, accept Finance Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance number 3036 amending certain provisions of City Code Section 3-1-5 thereby making changes to the hotel and motel tax ordinance. H, accept Finance Committee recommendation and pass Resolution 2016-26 approving a one-year extension of the 2013 Service Master Contract. I, accept Finance Committee recommendation and pass Resolution 2016-27 supporting the preservation of the monarch butterfly and direct staff to register two city-owned native plant gardens on the monarchwatch.org website, purchase two monarch waystation aluminum signs, and install the signs. K, accept Finance Committee recommendation and approve the fiscal 2018 budget preparation and adoption timeline as presented, including the City Council Budget Workshop on Saturday, March 18, 2017, and officially cancel the special, the special City Council Budget Workshop previously scheduled for October 24, 2016. L, accept Finance Committee recommendation and approve the 2017 city meeting schedule. M, accept Finance Committee recommendation and approve the 2017 city holiday schedule. N, receive and file the City of Warrenville Police Pension Fund Extraryal Evaluation Report for the year beginning May 1, 2016, and ending April 30, 2017. O, receive and file approved minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on August 16, 2016. P, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting held on September 22, 2016. Q, receive and file report of invoices paid up to September 28, 2016, in the amount of $221,560.58, and R, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before October 17, 2016, in the amount of $474,488.20. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bromel.
Second. Motion in a second, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Thank you, we will return then to Item 6C. Alderman Hoffman, did you wish to bring that forward?
Accept staff recommendations, waive second reading and pass ordinance 3032 designating the TIFF number four redevelopment project area redevelopment plan and project.
Second.
Motion in a second. Alderman, I'm presuming you're going to vote against all three, would you like to do all three at once? Or do you want to do them individually?
Yes.
Okay, second or agree to that?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead and read the second two then, please.
D, accept the staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 3033 approving the City of Warrenville Southwest Route 59 Corridor Tax Increment Financing District, TIFF number four redevelopment plan and project. E, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 3034 adopting tax increment financing for the City of Warrenville Southwest Route 59 Corridor Tax Increment Financing District, TIFF four.
Okay, we have a motion in a second discussion. Alderman Hoffman?
Well, as I say, our county clerk says that these are raising taxes on the people outside the TIFFs, I believe they are, and until the statute, I believe that the TIFF statute could be a very useful tool if it was the flaw and it was corrected, and I believe the flaw can be corrected. So, I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries on to 6J. Alderman Widener, did you wish to bring that forward?
I move to accept the Plan Commission recommendation and direct the City Attorney to prepare an ordinance approving a major PUD amendment, various PUD exceptions, variations, and a special use permit for a drive-through facility in the B4 Motorist Service Zoning District, and denying a PUD variation for directional signage for the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through proposed at 28 West 125 Warrenville Road.
Second. Second by Alderman Davalos, discussion. Alderman Widener?
I guess in light of the many variations and the public comments that have come up, I guess I'm curious to know if, you know, the things like what the community is discussing, the extension on the fence by one foot to be an eight-foot fence, and whether or not the questions they had regarding the landscape plan, the removal of trees, the replacement of trees, and the other questions they had, whether they'll have a chance to have answers to their questions before we move ahead with this. I understand there's been a lot of citizen concern, and I certainly think it's worthwhile to address the community conversation that we've had regarding this matter.
Okay, I would ask Community Development Director Mensah to comment, if he could, on those items, on the concessions perhaps made by the owners that were asked for by the citizens, and any other information that you could help hopefully provide, hopefully. Ron?
I will do my best. The three things I heard asked specifically were the fence height, removal of trees, and replacement of trees. I'll start with the easiest one first. There are no plans to remove any of the existing mature trees. If any of the mature trees do die because of any work that happens on the site today or any disease in the future, the city's ordinances do require that they be replaced. Of course, they're not going to be replaced with 20-foot tall trees, they'll be replaced with eight-to-10-foot tall trees that will leave some gap that will have to be grown in. The fence height issue is something that the Plan Commission did discuss. There is an existing six-foot tall, as I understand it, it's a board-on-board fence on the, on or near the property line, which is actually the homeowners association's screening fence. It does allow for headlights to kind of sneak between the board-on-board fence, those fences have some daylight that can get through there. The applicant agreed to, as part of the Plan Commission discussion, to install a solid six-foot tall fence. It would be either high-quality wood or some type of PVC plastic material. It would be installed on the property, the BP property, and it would have to be maintained in good condition during the life of the special use, otherwise the special use permit could be revoked by the city if the fence is not maintained properly. There is some concern that if you install a taller fence, you're going to start needing to trim up the branches of the evergreen trees to accommodate the increased height of the fence. I did have an email communication with one of the adjacent residents that had suggested and was interested in the taller fence, and I indicated that the city's fence regulations specifically allow six-to-eight-foot tall fences. Anything above that would require a new public hearing and a variance to be approved by the city. I'm not aware of any situations where the city did require a taller fence than eight-foot in a transition yard situation in the 20-plus years that I've been working for the city. I did go back and look at the records for the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through approval that was granted for the relatively new Dunkin' Donuts facility on 59. It's in the end cap of the shopping center that has the Chinese restaurant in it on the east side of 59 out in front of, not Edgbrook, Winchester, thank you. And the city did require, in that case, an eight-foot tall fence on the property line. Now, the difference between that is that basically the driveway is right on the property line, the garbage facilities are right on the property line, the houses are right off the property line, and there's no room for any type of vegetation. So, at least from my perspective, the situation at the BP site on Warrenville and Winfield is significantly different. There's much more space in the evergreen tree buffer that exists today is a pretty extensive and thick buffer. Those are the three things I heard asked. There were some other traffic concerns that were raised this evening, some noise concerns. From the staff perspective, we do believe that those items have been addressed appropriately. I know that the one resident that spoke about traffic did provide a letter to the City Council dated September 29. I did forward that to the city's traffic consultant who did evaluate that. He did provide to me late this afternoon a response, and essentially, I'll summarize it, I could distribute it as part of the next City Council Agenda Packet, because obviously this isn't being approved tonight. So, you have that, and I can share it with the adjacent resident also, but he feels that some of the information isn't a fair comparison for this site, and that his conclusions from the previous reports that he provided to the Plan Commission still are, hold true.
Okay.
And one final point I think is important to make, that if the city does approve a special use permit, and that special use permit is subject to a variety of conditions, the applicant is responsible to comply with those conditions, and if the applicant fails to comply with those conditions, and after some due process continues to fail to comply with those conditions, the city can revoke the special use permit.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Widener, can follow up?
Yes, I guess I'm really concerned over this, just because this business site wasn't intended or planned for an additional business other than, you know, the gas station and the convenience store inside. And I remember when it was first originally planned, they came in with a, BP came in with a pitch that they were going to have their own cooks and chefs that were going to be making breakfast for people in there, and I think that probably lasted a half a year, maybe a year, to have that special employee that was actually baking inside the facility. So, it didn't really, you know, take off, otherwise they probably still would have been doing it, and I guess, you know, the drive-through situation concerns me. It seems like no one has taken as much study of this as the resident that we heard from tonight. I think she was very deliberate and very specific in her approach, and, you know, lacking any other studies, I think we're probably without the detail of information. I don't think our own personnel has studied this quite so intensely as the person who presented tonight. I found her statements to be pretty accurate and are very accurate and thought-provoking, especially when she talked about the stacking distance. I've seen that where, you know, on a plan, you'll see cars lined up bumper to fender with no gap in between, but in reality, you do see, you know, three, four feet, you know, or people delaying or whatever, and I guess I am concerned over the overflow of traffic into Warrenville Road and the opacity issue between the business site and the residence. I think, don't, I guess I do have a follow-up question, in that the opacity levels for this kind of thing is supposed to reach 80%, and I just wonder if the fence is allowed to go eight feet, whether that would increase the opacity level, and whether or not the applicant would be willing to raise the fence to the, you know, extend it from the minimum of six feet to the maximum of eight feet. I think that might be a good, good effort on the, on the part of the applicant. Thank you.
I honestly can't speak to what the applicant would be willing to do or not. We have had a communication with the applicant about the fence height, and there is concern, I think it's a legitimate concern, that to install a taller fence, you're going to need to cut off more of the evergreen branches to accommodate that increased height. So, you can have a taller fence, but you're going to lose some of the existing evergreen on the backside, the north, the south side, the residence side, to accommodate that. I would also speak to the issue of the traffic analysis. The city does, something like this typically require that the applicant perform a traffic analysis. They did hire a professional consulting firm who performed, in my experience, a extremely detailed traffic analysis of Dunkin' Donuts facilities that are similar to what's being proposed here, that was submitted for the city's review. The city's traffic engineering consultant did do an initial review of that traffic study, essentially concurred with the conclusions. After the initial public hearing, we asked our traffic consultant to go back and look at some of the, the city's traffic consultant to go back and evaluate some of the concerns that were raised at the first public hearing meeting. The city's traffic consultant produced a second memorandum to outline his assessment of those additional concerns. Again, basically agreeing with the original conclusions that both the applicant's consultant made and he made, and then as a final step in this process, after receiving the information from Ms. Wade on September 29, it was forwarded to our traffic consultant a third time, and he did produce the memo that I referred to that hasn't been distributed, but again, I think it reaffirms that from at least a traffic engineering professional perspective, he feels that the information that's been submitted and performed by the professional consultants is done in a professional manner, consistent with industry standards, and there's nothing there that suggests that there's going to be any new significant traffic problems at this location should this particular business be allowed to go forward.
Thank you, Ron. Additional comments? Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I guess just in conclusion, I'd consider making a motion to delay acceptance of this until we could hear from the petitioner to find out if they would extend their, the fence up to an eight-foot height and how that would play into the removal of the pine trees or the landscaping that could be affected. I don't know, I'm not close to that situation, so I don't know what the preferred look would be on that, but I think it would be good to delay this and address that, and then also, if we could discuss the, the traffic volume and, and that for the future, I think that would be, be good, and what we're going to do to ensure the traffic doesn't get backed up in Warrenville Road. And, you know, it's one thing to say this fits into the business plan, but a smooth operation, I think- one thing to say this fits into the business plan, but a smooth operation, I think, is what we all desire. And if it's just going to, you know, conflict the site with people going in and out of the car wash, cars with trailers, you know, cars stacked at the donut drive-through, it doesn't seem to me to be a well-greased operation. So, I guess I have, still have a lot of concerns about the traffic volume and the flow of the business operation on this site. Thank you.
Okay. Remind you that the motion tonight is a recommendation to have the city attorney to prepare an ordinance that would come back in two weeks. So, this is not a final approval, so there's time to address some of those issues. We do have a representative for the business here tonight. Would you like to add something to the meeting?
Yes. Hi, my name's Eric Carlson, the architect, and, I guess, speaking on behalf of the BP owners. A couple of, I have talked it over with the owners back there, and we have no issue with the eight-foot fence. We'd actually considered that. Mr. Mensah had informed us that there was a request for a 12-foot fence, which is a little excessive, but the eight-foot would be fine. And I will say that there is, between the fence level that's on the, that separates the BP and the HOA unit is a six-foot-high fence, and there's a slope down that's about another six feet. So, peak from road is about 12 feet. So, if we add the extra two feet, there is a little bit of concern with the limbs, but I think the eight-foot is probably okay. Positioning of that fence is going to be important. So, I might want to have potentially an arborist or somebody look at that to make sure that we're not going to do any damage to the trees by going eight feet. But pending any result from that, we have no issue with the eight feet. Do any, want to make one other point, too, is on the, on the graphics that show our stacking, it's 20 feet from car to car, which is an industry standard. The average car is about 16 feet, so that does leave about that four-foot gap between there. So, it is representing fairly reasonable stacking. I'll touch on the traffic, too, but I think Mr. Mensah did a fair, good job of defining that. I also spent a couple of days out at the site early in the morning with a decibel meter, listening to the sounds, sound from the car wash, sound from the gas station area. And those were all discussed at the Plan Commission meeting. I'm happy to go into those now if you'd like. But we did, we did look at noise, light, and I investigated the traffic in and around that area. I have plenty of videos from that seven o'clock to nine o'clock range, or six o'clock to eight o'clock range, when I was out there, showing that intersection, the traffic, how it queues through the lights. It does empty out at every, every single, every single light exchange. So, I think if the, if you want to see videos, I can send those, and you guys can look at them, too. But it does show that that clears. And I think it's pretty reasonable, looking at that and the flows on that site, that it does, it looks to me that it's going to flow fine. In fact, I've done a lot of Dunkin' Donuts sites. I've done a lot of Dunkin' Donuts sites in gas stations, and quite honestly, this one seems to actually flow better than a lot of the other ones I've done. Couple of the things that we have done, there was a concern with the garbage truck noise. The gas station owners have contacted garbage waste management company and are willing to change companies if waste management can't commit to coming after seven o'clock. So, that was a concern that was brought up. There's been some early morning pickups. So, they have tried to do, you know, some work with the village, the concerns of the residents, to try to minimize some of these issues. Also, I have a good photograph. If you've been out to the site, you will, will see a fairly extensive line of trees. The evergreens are very full. So, if you've got, in fact, you can't even see, and again, I've got a PowerPoint that shows a picture, if we want to pull it up, you can't even see the townhomes from the, behind the gas station. If you look there, you can't even see them, because the trees are so dense. So, there's a decent amount of screening. The eight-foot solid fence will help combat the noise, the lights from the cars, which are, you know, four feet high or so. So, I think it's a reasonable concession to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Additional comments by counsel? Alderman Ashauer?
The screening's a big deal, and it would make some sense to me to put the screening fence closer to the curb height, move it closer to the parking area and to the gas station, rather than the fence that's existing. So, it would create kind of a natural buffer in between there. And the closer the, an eight-foot fence is to the curb, the more light, the more sound, and the more garbage it's going to prevent going past that. And it seems like it might be a reasonable consideration to give more effective use of that.
Okay. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I've been thinking about this for a while, and attended both of the public hearings at the Plan Commission. And just one, one comment to begin with. I have an objection when I hear that, because someone has moved next to a certain zoning area, that forever and ever, they can never say anything about what goes on. I think all of us can imagine a situation where we move somewhere, and it is zoned something or other, and then things begin to change. Either the type of business is there, or variances are requested, and all of a sudden, it isn't what we moved in next to. So, I'm not saying this is or is not like that, but I, I do want to say to the residents, I have appreciated and been impressed that the residents of this area that have an issue with this have done exactly what they are supposed to do as residents of an area and citizens of our town, and that is to contact public officials. They have contacted staff. They have collected data. They have observed. They have shared their feelings at public hearings, and now today with us. So, however this votes out, I am very impressed with the citizens, that they've done exactly what they're supposed to do. So, I would thank you for that. It's helped me to understand this a little more broadly than I might have before. The second thing is, I appreciate what the owner is trying to do to make things better. But I will tell you honestly, my concern is traffic and safety. That is a unique intersection. And having this drive-through, I wish I could, those of us up here have the map of the Dunkin' Donuts, and so, it's easy to visualize these things if you have it, and maybe those in the audience have it also. But the only easy route in this drive-through is if you are coming, going east on Warrenville Road, and you turn right into the drive-through, and you get your coffee and donuts, and there's only one way to leave, and you leave and you go in the right turn only out on Winfield Road, and you have an easy shot at this. The other three choices, you know, going north on Winfield, or going, if you come out the exit and go east on Warrenville Road, that's not too bad. But boy, if you have to make a left out of there, it's tough. You have a Walgreens across the street. And I noticed at the Plan Commission, there was a commissioner who, I thought it was interesting, it was kind of neat. He came south on Winfield Road, approaching the intersection, made a right in front of the Walgreens, and then tried to make a left into the gas station. Now, this is going to occur this way, whether it's a Dunkin' Donuts or not. And he said, all three times he did it, he was very, he said that all three times, people were kind enough to let him in to make the left. That's great. And, but that's, I don't think it's a great traffic period, when we have to depend on people, you know, stopping to let us in to make a left. So, if you're not going south on Winfield Road, coming out of the gas station, Dunkin' Donuts, then you have to come around the gas station. You have to kind of go north, and you can either go between the building and the eight gas pumps, and people will be walking back and forth, and cars will be exiting. Or you can go behind the eight pumps. But there's still two lanes of traffic that are coming together, so they can exit the north entrance, either to go left on Warrenville, or right on Warrenville, or right on Warrenville, and, or go across some lanes of traffic to very quickly get in a left lane, to turn left to go north on Winfield. So, now we have semis at some times, not all the time. And then, what if there's more than the nine cars there? I don't think they're going to back up out onto Warrenville Road, but they're going to back up around the building, when you've already got all the gas station customers leaving, plus now the Dunkin' Donuts customers leaving, all going out that one exit. And the people from Walgreens trying to turn left, I don't know. As I looked at this and studied this, and even today, I was coming back from out of town, and I was coming north on Winfield, made a left on Warrenville right there. And lo and behold, I had to slow down, because someone was turning left, and now that we're getting our one lane over the bridge, and then someone was trying to come left out of the Walgreens, and I just, I went, wow. Not that it's going to be this way all the time, but people have checked at various times. I just think this is not the best traffic situation, safety situation. I just think it has to be made better, or something has to change. And that is my main concern. Even though I've listened to everybody, and I, I might be out there if I lived there, I just think it is not going to be a safe intersection. People are going to be frustrated, and the businesses may suffer just from that. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, I was just wondering, on the south lot line, there's a landscape berm, if they could build the fence on top of the landscape berm to maximize the height of the fence, and intermingle it with the existing trees, and replant some new vegetation trees, you know, some evergreens in it. Possibly between the height of the landscape berm that's existing and the eight-foot fence, you'd have probably about a 12-foot fence there. Thank you.
Ron, you're familiar with the topography out there? Is that possible?
I would suggest that in order to be able to put the, a new fence on essentially the top of the berm, which is kind of where the trees are planted, that you're going to have to do some serious pruning to the existing trees. And these are, these are, these are, from a transitional yard buffering standpoint, these evergreens provide, I would say, one of the more desirable transitional yards we have in town. I mean, it's an excellent buffer. So, I would be cautious about going in there and doing any extensive pruning. I think the wiser choice, from at least a staff perspective, would be to look at locating the fence on either side of the existing vegetation, so as to minimize the disruption to the existing vegetation.
Okay. A reminder, the vote tonight is not a final vote. This is to give staff and the attorney direction to write the ordinance, which means we'd have two more weeks to take a look at details, and two more weeks for folks to get their information straight. Any other additional comments? Are we ready? Alderman Goodman?
I just want to say that working with the residents and working with the city staff on this, it seems to me that the property owner has been very reasonable, and has been very accommodating, and is continuing to be so, if we do end up moving the fence from six feet to eight feet, which they say is okay. And I appreciate that attitude of trying to work to be a good neighbor. I hope that the garbage issue can be resolved. I hope that the early morning garbage pickup in particular can be resolved. It sounds like you're working on that, and please do continue to work on that. It's very important to the neighbors. We've heard quite a lot about it. So, let's, let's try and foster a spirit of, of good neighborliness, and try and walk away from this project, you know, however it ends up being resolved, with respect for each other, and hopefully a better understanding of what our neighbors need and what their issues are. So, thank you.
Okay. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. I think I would echo Alderman Davalos's statement. The citizens have done a great job of presenting your position. You've got quite a number of concessions that I think will help make this more palatable. We have had a traffic engineer, whose professional reputation depends on him getting work, tell us again and again and again that this is going to work. We have to make our decisions based on that, as opposed to anecdotal evidence. I appreciate the fact that you have taken the time to do that. You show concern for your neighborhood and for the community. But from my perspective, at least, if we're going to make a decision, it has to be based on, backed up by professional opinions that we can use to justify our decision, as opposed to anecdotal evidence. So, again, this comes back in two weeks as an ordinance. There was no amendment to the motion to change the height of the fence. That could still be discussed. If the applicants are willing to do that, we'll let staff work on that. And if it comes back, and the council determines that an eight-foot fence is necessary, you could always change the ordinance in two weeks to require the eight-foot, as opposed to the six-foot fence. The six-foot is in the ordinance currently, right?
That's in the Plan Commission recommendation.
Right. So, that could be changed in two weeks. If you determine that you'd rather have an eight-foot fence, I would invite those of you who have not visited the site to go out there and visit the site and see what's there. Ron makes an excellent point. That wall of green is pretty impressive in terms of a buffer. Another fence in between is certainly going to make a big difference, I would think. So, again, I appreciate everyone who's had input into this. Everyone has been respectful and done a good job of presenting their position. Okay. We have nothing under regular agenda, nothing under unfinished business, no new business for this evening. We do have the need, however, for a closed session this evening. Alderman Berry, would you please give the motion and the citation?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of five ILCS 120/2, front C, parence 11. Litigation when an action against affecting or in behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent.
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. We will not be conducting any business after our executive session, so you're free to go home. Thank you for your attendance this evening.